I'm going to call this meeting of the Landale City Council to order at 6:34 along with the successor agency and the Landale Housing Authority meeting to order. I'm going to ask the Madam City Clerk to conduct the roll call, please.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Pro Tem Cuevas?
Present.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman?
Here.
Mayor Pullen-Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Cuevas will lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by Pastor George Magalene from Hope Chapel will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Please stand, remove your hats, right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council, staff, everyone. Just scripture and a brief prayer tonight. The scripture is from Jeremiah 29:11, and it could be applied to the city and to every individual. It's God speaking through the prophet, and he says, "Surely I know the plans that I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." Let's pray. Father God, we do acknowledge you, and we do thank you that you are the source of all hope, and hope is so needed in our lives, Lord. We do acknowledge you in all our ways, and thank you for your presence here, and are reminded that in your presence there is fullness of joy. Lord, we commit the city to you and every citizen, Lord, children, youth, and adults. Pray that your grace and your love would govern them, protect them, Lord. And we thank you for this meeting tonight and the wisdom that you dispense upon your servants as they make decisions that honor you and glorify you and indeed benefit the people of this community. I'd also like to pray for our first responders and thank you for them, Lord. Pray that you protect them as they protect us. We commit this meeting to you. I personally pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for being here tonight. Thank you. Okay, let's hear from our public safety folks. Let's hear from our Los Angeles County Sheriff Department first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm here to present the public safety report for May 15th through June 5th of this year. I'm going to go over a few crime statistics for this, I think it was like a three-week period here. Two reported vehicle burglaries, three reported residential burglaries, one reported commercial burglary. There were 14 shoplifting incidents. There were two catalytic converter thefts, three aggravated assaults, four non-aggravated assaults, two robberies with a firearm, two strong-arm robberies, and seven vehicle thefts or attempts vehicle theft. In that same time, deputies responded to approximately 518 calls for service. Twenty-nine of the calls for service were related to traffic collisions, and there were 21 citations issued during that period. And then today I'm reporting on one notable investigation that I was part of or that we're working on. Residents from 147th Street contacted me regarding vehicles doing donuts or spinning around uncontrollably near their intersections on the street. And specifically on this one, some of the residents were able to capture video footage of the incident where we were able to, excuse me, obtain workable information where we can conduct a follow-up investigation into the people that did this. So with that, we're currently working on following up on that and identifying the person that did it. And I just want to encourage the council and cities of Landale, residents of Landale, to document this, report it to us, and give us evidence, footage, so that we can work with it. And this concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Yes, ma'am.
Which side of 147th?
This was between Prairie and Hawthorne.
Okay, because I know there was recently like an overturned vehicle, I don't know, on I think Avis or something, and I think it was they were driving fast. I did get a request for speed bumps, but I know one resident already has the petition, was explain the process for how it works. And just for the public out there, too, if you are requesting something like speed bumps, you do have to speak with our staff, go through a traffic committee process in order to get those installed, in case, just for the general public's knowledge. But, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say, to piggyback off of what you just told us about the residents and having footage for us, I appreciate the residents assisting us in keeping our city safe. So to the residents of 147th, if they're watching, I really appreciate their being proactive and assisting us in this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Now, let's hear from our Los Angeles County Fire Department. Battalion Chief Brian King.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor of Landale City Council. The statistical summary for May 1st to May 31st is 283 total calls.
Go ahead and put that microphone up for me.
The statistical summary for May 1st through 31st, 283 total calls for service, five fire-related incidents, which constituted four trash or rubbish fires, and one stove and oven fire, 176 emergency medical calls for services, both ALS and BLS, 72 good intent calls, which were non-fire-related emergencies, two false calls, and one special incident, which was residential flooding, which was a broken pipe in the house. And that is the statistical summary for the month of May. And if there's no further questions on that, I would like to introduce the team from our advanced practitioner unit and Assistant Medical Director, Dr. Kishani.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Simon Kishani. I oversee the advanced provider response unit. I understand there were some questions, and so I'll briefly describe the unit and its mission, and then I can take some more specific questions. So the advanced provider response unit is a unique unit that we have been employing mostly in the high desert area, and then through some advanced funding through the American Rescue Plan, we've received federal funding to expand that program, and now we've brought it to Battalion 18 and 20, of which Landale is part of Battalion 18, as well as the El Monte area. It's staffed seven days a week, 10 hours a day, uniquely by a nurse practitioner or physician or physician assistant, along with a firefighter, paramedic. So for today, we have our unit staffed by firefighter, paramedic Deso, and a nurse practitioner, Trimmerit, and they're sitting with us here today. Its mission is to address low-acuity callers. As a department, 10% to 20% of our call volume is what we typically call low-acuity, does not benefit from the advanced skills of a paramedic. And so the idea behind this unit is to address some of these lower-acuity calls, either treat the patient in place or navigate them to another destination such as a mental health facility or back to their physician's office. As I mentioned, it's completely federally funded at this point, and it will be funded through 2025. And afterwards, we're hoping that it will be part of the department moving forward. Any questions on the program?
Any questions on the program?
No questions, just a comment. As a 20-year emergency room employee myself, I appreciate knowing all of you are out there. I'm looking forward to improving some of the wait times in the ER and letting them focus on some of the other things. I appreciate every single time you guys enter Landale. So please, keep up the good work. We need you. Healthcare needs you. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the program as well. I recall my days of being an EMT for ambulance company, and periodically we would have a nurse practitioner, actually just a nurse, I'm not sure if it was practitioner or not, to go on some calls with us. Some of the calls, it was a little more advanced for EMTs, but not quite for paramedics, like kind of in-between or what have you. So I do really appreciate the work you guys do. And this is really a unique program that will bring a lot of good service to our community, hopefully get more funding from the federal government. So if you need a partner, you need some letters of support or what have you when it comes for, is this like earmarked or what have you from the federal government?
Yeah, so this is currently earmarked funding for these three units, and the funding will expire in 2025. And yes, we appreciate support because we'd like to see one of these units in each one of our battalions.
Absolutely. So when the time is appropriate, call on us, and we'll make sure we get behind you and support you.
Thanks for the support.
Appreciate everyone for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is National Public Works Week. May 21st through the 27th. National Public Works Week is a celebration of the tens of thousands of men and women welcome in North America who provides and maintains the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. And this year marks the 63rd year of the National Public Works Week. In recognition of Public Works Week, the City of Landale recognized the dedication and skill set of the Public Works Department employees. They play an essential role in the day-to-day operation of the city. And at this time, I would like to welcome our Public Works Director. I see he has joined us on the podium. And on behalf of the City of Landale, we hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th as the National Public Works Week. And in doing so, we encourage the community to recognize the contributions made by the Public Works employees to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of all of the residents in the City of Landale, proclaim this day, June 5th, 2023.
Yes, that's correct. That's correct. Mr. Mayor, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the best time of the year for all public works departments across the nation, and I'm proud to be here in the City of Landale. And, you know, I thought that I was going to do that little presentation, but I'm honored, Mr. Mayor, that you did that.
I thought you was going to do it as well.
Yeah, you made the week even much better, you know, for the Public Works Department. So with your permission, Mayor, Council, I would like the number of Public Works employees who were able to attend tonight, you know, to come up and be recognized by you and Council.
And also, I'm going to ask them to come behind us. We're going to do something a little different. If they can come behind us, we're going to take a photo.
Perfect, perfect. Please, guys, don't be shy.
So I hope your camera ready.
Can you introduce them as they walk?
Absolutely, absolutely.
He can have that response.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, come on. Filter to the back.
I just keep going.
All right, so first is Grace. She's admin analyst, management analyst in Public Works. And, you know, she's in the office. She and I work very closely together. Next is Jack. He is our sole Public Works Inspector in the city. Next one is Biola. Biola is our new admin assistant in Public Works, and she's fairly new. How long you been here? Four months? Yeah. She's doing an awesome job. Next is Johnny. Hi, Johnny. He is in the field services. We have Willie, and we have Gabriel. They're all three of the orange shirts of several that we have in the field services that do the day-in, day-out maintenance and operation throughout the city.
Okay. [applause] I don't think I'll be able to see that.
Oh, yeah.
As you can tell, we didn't rehearse this. One, two, three.
Oh, yes. Why don't you guys move forward, get closer to that chair?
As you can tell, we didn't rehearse this.
Why don't you guys move forward, get closer to that chair?
Two more.
It's a selfie, just.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
You got a long agenda.
No, it's just.
Yeah.
No, they're all under.
Consent, yeah, that's true. That is true. It does seem like an awful lot, duh. Okay. Okay, we're now on oral communications. Oral communications, we have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to either the Landale City Council, the successor agency, or the Landale Housing Authority on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, you don't have to wait for your name, just come to the podium when the person before you finishes up. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. And we'll start with our first speaker. Yes, sir?
Hey, good evening. John Schreiber, 163rd Street. First of all, I know this is actually on the agenda, so I don't need to talk about it now, but I saw that in the city budget that you guys have allocated some funds for the buses to take Landale residents down to Metro Headquarters for the eventual vote on the Green Line, and I obviously wanted to come here and say a big thank you for doing that. We thought we were going to have to do a lot of fundraising for that, so the fact that you guys allocated that, that's really helpful, and I think it's really important. I think it's really important that Landale show up for the vote, and I think from what I hear, that will happen in September from everybody I'm talking to. And I think even if you don't agree with me and our no-on-rail residents, I hope that anybody with an opinion on the Green Line gets on the bus and comes downtown and lets their opinion known. Because the last thing we want is for them to ignore, you know, little Landale. And it'll be very hard for them to do that when we have a room full of residents, thanks to the bus that you guys are funding. So thank you for that. And secondly, I also wanted to follow up on a question I think I asked the last meeting to the city attorney, and he's going to check on it, about possibly letting the public know how you guys voted on the Green Line vote and which option to support. We obviously respect however each you guys voted and the reasons that you did it, but I think in the interest of transparency, it might be good, just let Landale residents know how the vote went, since it happened in closed session. Finally, just want to let you know, we had another meeting with a rep from Metro Board this past Friday. It was a rep from Mayor Butt's office. He walked through with us. We showed him our concerns. We have two more reps coming on Friday, June 23rd, one from Supervisor Janice Hahn's office, and then we think Jackie DePonte-Walker herself will come as well. So obviously, you guys are always invited to those walks if you want to come along. You know how to get in contact with us to get more info. So again, thank you for supporting the bus idea. I hope you guys vote that through tonight. And obviously, if you want help getting the word out about the buses, once that time comes, you know where to find us. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Randall Abraham.
This will be the last city council meeting until July 17th, 2023. Rather than following the past practice of scheduling the meeting to the day after Monday holiday conflict, council voted to cancel the next meeting, June meeting altogether, due to the Juneteenth holiday. The Monday, July 3rd meeting has also been canceled. This results in a 40-day gap between meetings, the longest that I can remember. The canceled meetings at the end of the year result in less than a 30-day gap. It is important to note that the staff report regarding these holidays only recommended canceling the July 4th meeting, but recommended alternative dates for the June 19th and the September 5th meeting. These meetings were canceled with no good reasons for doing so. Last year, Labor Day meeting was moved to the following day. This is at a time when attendance by concerned residents is at an increase with timely issues that they want to bring directly to this body. With no further meetings in June, this will be the last meeting before July 4th. Unlike past years, no plan and illegal fireworks has been placed on the agenda. What is the city's plan this year? Will the patrol schedules be adjusted for a time period before July 4th? How many deputies will be on duty for July 4th? Will undercover cars be used again? The city has increased fines for first-time offenders to $2,500. For this to be a deterrent, potential offenders need to be aware of the fines. How is the word being spread? That information is not currently on the city's website, and if you do a search regarding illegal fireworks on the city's website, $1,000 for the first offense is still indicated and not the new first-time fine of $2,500. Clearly, the city's website needs to be updated to update the new fines. At this point, only the no-fireworks signs on city streets with the correct fine of $2,500 is the only indication that the fines have been increased. There has been mention of city staff issuing citations for illegal fireworks on July 4th. Although the assistance in curtailing this activity is appreciated, no one wants to risk the safety of employees who do not have the training and resources as what a Landale deputy. Last year, the April 18th meeting detailed the city's illegal fireworks suppression plan. This included a social media presence detailing the illegal works fines. When will this start? This is the first year that I can remember that a plan for July 4th has not been on the agenda. Last year was once again a July 4th of patrol lawlessness in Landale. Have any plans been made to improve last year's bombardments? Thank you.
Just a couple of quick things. Dina from 148th Street. I got a call today from Johnny Calderone from Public Works, and he called me about the sign that's missing on my block. So I want to give a good shout-out to him. Please let him know. Great job. He's replacing the sign. I was just doing a follow-up. This has been a while ago, we talked about this sign, so really appreciate it. So while we were on the phone, I asked him a couple of other things. So people just, you know, throw out trash and what have you, and somebody threw out a tire, and they decided to put it over the fire hydrant. So this tire's been there for a couple weeks on Condon and 149th, but of course, nobody in that neighborhood calls it in. So I asked him about, I asked Johnny today about it, and he was so nice. Tire is gone. He went and got it for me. Nobody around there, you know, what else do you do with a spare tire but put it around a fire hydrant? Somebody did take it off the fire hydrant and just leaned it up against a telephone pole. But anyway, really cool on Johnny's part to even do that. So I also asked him about, which this goes back to October with Cuevas, Kingsdale and 147th, still not completed, and I believe that's an ADA issue or something. So anyway, so that was, that's still like an ongoing issue. And I wanted to ask about the car wash now that's closed on MBB and Hawthorne. Is the Bellagio, I wanted to get an update on that. Is that Bellagio guy totally gone, or is he remodeling? He made such a big stink when we were trying to get that other car wash in here, and at least that other car wash was willing to give back to the community and what have you, whereas I know where he wasn't. But also, want to give out a shout-out to Mike Estes. I know he wasn't here at the last meeting, but he seems to do an excellent job with all our community events. I don't attend all of them because a lot of them are geared towards children. But I would like to know the difference between the Blues Festival and Music Festival, because what I feel is the adults, we should have some more music festivals for adults and children, family or what have you, or maybe a car show. I attended the car show in Old Town Torrance this past weekend. Good turnout, great cars, music, really a nice event. And also, just mentioning on the counseling of the future meetings, I don't agree with your scheduling on that, too. That's just too much of a gap. And one other quick thing, the media truck that you guys have and bought years ago that's supposed to be up for sale, where's that at right now? Or can we get that up on Truck Trader, OfferUp, Craigslist, or on Inglewood Avenue with a for-sale sign and get some money back out of that? Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to close public comments and bring it up to diocese for comments from the council. Let's hear from Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman. Hoffman-Hoffman.
Thank you to everyone that came out to speak with us tonight. I guess first I'm going to, Randall, ask either Sean or Justin, do either one of you have any comments about fireworks and how we're handling them this year, and also anything to do with social media this year?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are addressing, we're going to, I talked to Michael Reyes, or Michael Reyes, this weekend. Fact that the City of Ontario, I want him to copy those similar signs I have everywhere all throughout the city. I sent him a picture, text. So we're going to put banners and signs all throughout the city about the fines. We're going to put it on social media. We're also going to put out the little trailers that we set out historically. We're having banners. We're also going to put banners out. In addition, we're going to put stuff on the website and notify everybody and our socials. The sheriff's department will be asking for volunteers. Sergeant Smith's going to be working with, get that crew of deputies. But we're also, as mentioned numerous times, that the civilian staff are going to go out, too, and cite. We're going to kind of interact. We're going to go out there. We're going to go in undercover cars. The cars are already rented, and we're going to go out there, and anyone lighting up fireworks is going to get a site. So there'll be two sets of groups. There'll be the civilian staff, as well as the sheriff's staff, and they'll be working separately. So we'll be all pacing. Staff are volunteering to come in on their day off and to help address the fireworks issue. I think that's it.
Very good. Thank you.
And then, Dina, thank you for recognizing Public Works. They do work hard, and they are the first defense as far as, as an elected person, hearing the complaints of our neighborhood. It's one of the biggest things is when we have such a good Public Works Department. So I appreciate you giving them a shout-out. I'm sure Ahmed here in the front, he's taken note, too, that it was said. So I appreciate that. And Mike Estes, what can we say? Mike does a beautiful job at handling all of the events that we have here in the city. So I appreciated that, too. I don't have an answer for you on the media vehicle. I don't know if...
I have an answer. So we're waiting for bids, but recently received several bids. They only, they were way too low. So we're looking, we're setting out again for bids. If we don't get the right bids, what we're going to look at is also maybe partnering it out and keeping the van for Mike Estes' department. So we are looking at alternatives. I don't believe in giving away our equipment. As the council knows, I kept two other vehicles, and we fixed one pretty cheaply. So if we can keep them, we'll keep them. And if we don't get a good bid at market, then we'll keep that van and we'll sell off the equipment inside of it.
Thank you for that answer. That's all I have.
Okay. Kelsey Pickern.
Well, I think Rhonda did most of them, but John was asking about the, how the vote went. Maybe you can answer that, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, as councils are aware, I was not here that night. The Assistant City Attorney was here. In addition, our firm is conflicted out of doing that work, so special counsel reported the vote. I, because I wasn't in the meeting, I don't know the vote with respect to the three to one. However, it's important that the public be aware that Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman was the one who abstained, and she abstained due to a conflict of interest based on her residence. That abstention only came up at the time that the council decided to take a position. Before that point, Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman was perfectly allowed to be part of the city's decision-making because the city's position was that no project should come, and that any project that does come should be fully mitigated. Once a decision on a, one path or another was before the council, at that point, the conflict of interest arose. She acted properly and abstained from a vote. That's my report, as much as I have it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. With that, I pass it on.
Can I just have you mention as well, I had to abstain because of how the proximity of one of the...
Correct. Yes, yes. Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman's individual residence is within 500 feet of one of the two pathways. Prior to the decision between pathways being in front of the council, the general effects of the metro extension on the city is what was being considered, and therefore, under the Political Reform Act and the FPPC guidelines, a circumstance called the public generally exception, which is to say that the decision or the issue before the council affects the general public, which is defined by regulation to be 10% or more of the residences of the city, or 10% or more of the total properties of the city. That exception or exemption... Once a decision on a, one path or another was before the council, at that point, the conflict of interest arose. She acted properly and abstained from a vote. That's my report as much as I have it. Thank you all very much.
Can I just have you mention as well, I had to abstain because of how the proximity of one of the.
Correct, yes, yes. Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman's individual residence is within 500 feet of one of the two pathways. Prior to the decision between pathways being in front of the council, the general effects of the metro extension on the city is what was being considered. And therefore, under the Political Reform Act and the FPPC guidelines, a circumstance called the public generally exception, which is to say that the, the decision or the issue before the council affects the general public, which is defined by regulation to be 10% or more of the residences of the city or 10% or more of the total properties of the city. That exception or exemption allowed Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman to be part of the discussion. However, once we got down to one line or the other, then the exception doesn't apply, which is why she acted properly in recusing herself at that point.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Suarez.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. A few of the topics were discussed. So I'll jump on, let me see. There is one question because I think we ask it every year with regards to resources that we allocate towards public safety on the Fourth of July. But it's my understanding that in terms of at least, I think we've requested to see if we could get more deputies, but it's always a shortage because not many people want to work on the holidays. So I don't know if either Sean or.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We budgeted, Mr. Reyes's office department, they budget every year so much for overtime for the deputies. But it is based on the deputies' availability, just like for the civilian staff here, what, who I can get to draft to come help. So it's based on that availability. You are correct. There are some deputies willing to do that work, but sometimes, you know, it is a major holiday. So some people want to time off.
And, and I think just in general too, if I'm not mistaken, there's a third, we're trying to also get even more deputies just in general. So it's probably a bit short as, as it is for, in that regards in, in the department. But, but you know, I do agree that we, we usually do have the, the, a little presentation about it. So I think it is helpful if we can remember to include that each year about how we're going to address it because I know that comes up every year. And then I did want to thank, Dina, thank you for recognizing our staff. You know, they, they really do work hard and, you know, we're a small city. So they wear many hats. And then as far as the car wash, I believe that was on an agenda. But they are expanding. I don't know if.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. That's correct. The, the Bellagio has been approved. They've gone through plan check, community development, and they're in the process of pulling their permits, finishing up and going forward. They're not closing their re, they're going to automated system.
And that's, so it's not, I guess with regards to the two, comparing the two, they're not quite comparable because they've already had their, according to the codes. I think at the time that they were put in, I don't know what discussion happened then with regards to approving it, but they are allowed to expand.
Yes, they're allowed to, they're, they conform to the Hawthorne Boulevard Plan for their site. Their site's different. It wasn't designated, the other site, the Old Guile Site was designated as a housing designated site. Whereas the other site was not.
So a little more clarification on that. And then I think I almost spoke on everything. But I will speak on the, the, the events for the Blues Festival versus Music Festival. And I think in the past, we've talked about still keeping the Blues because there was a big following for it. And then maybe the day before doing like a, a music festival for different variations and kinds of music. But I think some of us felt that it was important to keep the Blues just because of the, it had been in the years of getting that much of a following. But we did discuss another one, which I'm happy to discuss for future budgets. But I don't know right now, you know, where we're at. But that discussion hasn't come back yet.
It'll be on the, tonight's agenda. We're going to talk about it.
Oh, okay.
One or the other. And this is a recommendation from the Budget Subcommittee.
Okay. Well, that'll pass along.
Okay, very good. Yes, ma'am. Madam Protem, Cuevas.
Well, they touch on every point that I was going to make except a couple, two things. Can you let us know when banners, website and all that will be going up for the Fourth of July? Because it's already four weeks or three weeks prior to the event.
I certainly will get the, Mayor and Council will get that information out. I was already talking to Reyes on it on Friday.
Yeah, and some of that was just because of the proximity to the Pet Fair and the Health and Safety Fair, the banners, the street banners. We didn't want to take the Pet Fair banners down until after the event was over. So that was part of it. But some of those things have already begun. And I know Sarge has already been actively getting deputies filled for the days leading up to the Fourth of July. I think the Fourth of July was the only day when he's still struggling to get overtime deputies. But I think we're set on all the other days up until, so for the second, third and first, we're okay.
So the banners should be going out by the end of this week?
This week, yes.
Okay. The other thing is, could you give us an update on the Kingsdale 147th street work?
We, we're, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're, we're still working with them and trying to work through that. There's a, there's a lot of issues on that. We've had some more struggles with the Cowban Firm. So we're working through that right now.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, most of these items have already been touched on, but I do want to highlight a few of them. Yeah, regarding the buses for the metro, I am delighted that we do have that in the budget. But I want to encourage those, once the buses start to roll out, get on the bus. So your voices can be heard directly to the metro decision makers when that meeting takes place. Also, I do want to thank you also for bringing up Johnny in particular, Dina, for bringing up Johnny in particular and in general, the Public Works concerned the missing sign as well as the tire. I've seen that before, where tires, the tires over, not in Longdale, but another community with tires over the, you know, the fire hydrant for, seem like the appropriate place if you don't have any other place to put it, right? But I want to thank you for pointing that, that out as well. Car wash, yeah, I noticed they was doing the expansion, it's gotten underway. Some people do believe that they're closing, but they are expanding, not closing permanently. Concerning the fines for the, the increased fines, I think Mr. Randall said they're not on the website now. But if we can get those up, that the sign, that the fines have been increased on the website?
Yes, we'll get everything on the website. We'll work on that tomorrow morning. We'll make sure everything's updated. I know the ordinances are already up. And we'll make sure, I'll talk to the City Clerk's Office, make sure we get everything updated.
And we don't get a lot of traffic on the website, probably more social, by social media.
Social media is where we're going to send the fire out to warn everyone about the fines.
Okay, very good.
And we'll do that weekly. We'll follow up with them weekly on that. And I just want to follow up with the council and mayor too. Just as a heads up, we do have folks that dump consistently. So I asked Mr. Reyes's department and Johnny, since we're talking about Johnny Public Works, to forward those habitual folks that are taking advantage of the bulky item and then to, for Mr. Reyes to follow up them because I get in the same addresses weekly where they're just putting stuff out and they're violating the, our policy and, you know, calling in. So Mr. Reyes's staff are going to follow up with those folks and make sure that they, they follow the procedures for calling bulky items.
Well, I've always said that if you place bulky items, whether it's in front of your yard or in an apartment or what have you without calling for pickup, that is the same as dumping. You just dumped it in front of your, your residence, right? But it's the same as dumping and we haven't so far treated it as such. Most people may not be aware of how often you can call for bulky pickups. But most people are aware, but you just can't just leave it there. Just take a whole bunch of crap and just leave it there and hope that one by one, somebody will pick it up and it'll slowly disappear or what have you. That doesn't sound proper either, you know? So if we put, if we make it clear that this is a type of dumping, maybe people will take the extra time to, to call to see exactly when is appropriate to put those items out, especially in front of multi-family units. You know, when people move out of their apartments, a lot of times they just leave the mattress there. One time there was a whole love seat, it was a three ponies cassette, not cassette, but cassette. It was a love seat, a recliner. And I forget the other, other piece. This was like about a year ago or so during COVID. So, but if the owners know that they could be subject to a fine for allowing their tenants to just dump stuff because they're moving out, that might help us as well. But thank you for, and the staff for being on top of that. With that, that's all I will go over. And I will close the public comment at this time and we will continue our agenda. Let's go to item, item G, which is a consent calendar, items two through 13. What is the, what is the pleasure this boy concerning?
If there's no additions or protections, I'll make a motion to accept the consent challenge written.
All right. The motion's been made by currently that we adopt the consent calendars as is.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Cuevas. Is there any discussion on the motion to adopt the consent calendar? CNN with the council, please vote on item G.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item, under administrations, item 14, items of the City Council Successor Agency and Longdale Housing Authority, the annual budget fiscal year.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council members. So today we have the fiscal year 2324 budget presented for adoption. And we do have a presentation I'm going to go over. Just a little bit of background on how we came here, what we've done so far and why we're ready to adopt. So myself and staff, we met with all the different department directors and staff that were involved in budget. We went through the numbers, we reviewed them. And then from there, we met with the city manager and the department directors. And then from there, we also met with the Budget Subcommittee. And then in the last meeting, we met with, we had a budget workshop here in council chambers. So today we're ready, we can start the presentation. First, I'm going to go over our fund balance numbers. So for fiscal 2223, the year that we're in right now, we're expecting to end up the final at the bottom 29.8 million in the general fund balance. And then for next year, the budget we're proposing, we'll start with the same 29.8. We're going to have revenues of 19.5, expenditures of 18.3 million. And then that will have an ending fund balance of 31 million. This gives us a 1.1 million surplus. And we'll kind of, I'll go over the numbers as well. So we'll jump into, from here, we'll go into revenues. This gives us, this chart gives us a breakdown of the different sources of the revenues. So the biggest piece you'll see is taxes, which is 88%. And we also have court and traffic fines, use of money, licenses and permits, charges for service and other. Most of those are, you know, just a few percent. But the big piece is taxes. And we'll kind of, we'll go over the taxes as well and break down that a little bit too. So you can see what makes that up and how that's accounted for. So the biggest piece, obviously taxes, this just gives us in numbers, basically that same chart. So taxes makes up for, you know, the 2324 budget that we're proposing. It's going to be 16.3 million. You'll see there's a decrease there of about 231,000. And the other categories are there as well. They all have small decreases, taxes being the biggest. There's a little decrease in court and traffic fines, licenses and permits, a little bit of a decrease. Use of money has an increase and charges for services, a little bit of an increase. And then other revenues, a decrease. To go over taxes, these are mainly our sales tax numbers and property tax. It's this list right here, the 16.3 million for the 2324 budget. And you'll see there's a decrease of 231. This is based off of, you know, guidance we get from HDL regarding your sales tax numbers. The biggest one you'll see is our TOT. We're just not, we've reduced our projections for that down to 650,000. The 766 is the trend for the current year. We just have a feeling that's probably not going to continue. We did have a strong year coming out of COVID, but that's, you know, the economy starting to weaken up, interest rates going up, sales tax projections coming down a little. We expect that to come down as well. So 116,000 decrease there. The other major decreases is UUT, the Utilized Users Tax. Same thing there, you know, with the softening economy, we're kind of expecting to see a decrease there as well. So that's, and a couple of other things I want to go, it's not up here. But on revenues, as far as where there is an increase on the use of money for 116,000, the main part of that is, you know, we're doing a better job in investing. This, you know, I sit with Sean, the CM, and we go over what investments we're going to do, how we're going to invest. And so we're, you know, keeping a better eye on that so that we can maximize our returns there and try to, you know, recover some of these losses by investing better and having interest returns there. Any questions as far as revenues before I go on to expenditures? Okay, so this chart just shows general, general fund expenditures for 2324. You'll see operations is 70%, personnel is 20% and capital is 2% from the general fund. Capital's fairly small, just wanted to mention that just because most capitals funded by the different special revenue funds. You have your Prop A, Prop C, Measure M, R and M. So those are the ones really cover that. The general funds really just putting in their match portion of it, which comes out to about 2%. So jumping into personnel costs, this gives us the personnel cost, which is your salary and all benefits by department. So we can see, you know, kind of the breakdown of where the different departments are and their cost as far as it's related to the general fund. Obviously, the biggest pieces, the biggest one being municipal services and general admin. Although there's no employees out of that 160 general admin, that's really your purse cost. And there have been increases lately for that one. CalPERS has not been performing up to what their 6.8% was, what they expect to get. They've been coming in lower than that. And actually, I believe it was a loss for this last year. So those costs have been increasing. So that's what general operations, there's not employees, that's our purse cost basically. Just to kind of go over some of the main increases within the personnel. So in total, there's about a $319,000 increase compared to the 2223 projected actuals. And I highlighted four key points. City Clerk's Department, they hired a full-time assistant city clerk in 2223. So she was only there for part of the year, whereas she'll be there full year now. So that's why you have an increase there. Cable TV, we're planning on hiring a cable TV supervisor for 2324. So full year salary and benefits is coming out to about 147,000. And municipal services has about a 20,000 increase. And that's basically for, you know, they had some part-time employees they hired during the 2223, but that was like midway through and not all at once. So we're expecting, you know, we calculate for a full year of part-time employees as well as the additional CalPERS costs is coming up to that 20,000. And then we have community service, same thing here. They hired a bunch of part-timers in 2223. Again, like midway through the year and not all at once. But now when we calculate for the full year, the cost for all of that, as well as they hired a full-time admins, administrative assistant too. So all of that combined as well as the CalPERS cost increasing about 60,000 for that department. These are just the major ones I wanted to point out to come up with the 319,000. Any questions on personnel costs? Okay, so next is operation cost. And this is 70% of the total expenditures that chart earlier. And if we look at this, the biggest piece over here, we have this in public safety, which is 7.1 million, almost 7.2 million for the current budget, the 2324 proposed budget. So that makes up almost 60% of the expenditure budget on operations. And there was a large increase there, we'll get into that as well. But this is, you know, operation cost by department and the breakdown of it. And then we'll get into some of the key changes we have here. So general fund had about $839,000 increase in operation costs. Let's see, so the budget for legal, legal expenses, increase of about 185, mainly due to, you know, the third party that we hired for the Metro Green Line is in there. The sheriff contract that increased a little over 600,000 for the sheriffs because deputy price went up by 7.61%. And also their liability surcharge went from 11 to 12%, which is 1%. But that 1% calculates to a 9% increase in the cost. And then also municipal services increased by about 29,000. And that's basically for your vehicle maintenance and possible abatement costs. And I know we have new cars in there, but I think they're planning on adding lights to the top of the cars. So that's about 9,000 of that vehicle maintenance. Public Works, the Streets Department had about $87,000 increase. And this is mainly for landscape maintenance. I think there's been a lot of issues with landscapes, especially with COVID. Things were neglected. I don't know the prior. I don't know, the prior contractor didn't do as good of a job, so there's a lot of repairs and maintenance going on there, so there's some increased cost there. Community development, their costs increased by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand. The majority of this really coming from increased costs for the plan check review fees and services from the county that they provide. I think it's just in general, the economy, we have lots of inflation, prices on everything is going up, so that's mainly what this is. And then community services, increase of about fifty-six thousand. This covers a wide array of things, it's crossing guard services, printing and mailing costs for the Landalian newsletter, which hasn't happened, like, last year, I don't think it happened, and we're planning on two publications this year. The Youth Day Parade, flyers, recreation instructors, senior clubs, senior fitness class, and security for Youth Day Parade. Just general, everything has gone up in costs. So it's not all bad, there was some decreases, that covered all your increases. All of that combined was about one point one million of increases. To point out some of the major decreases, city clerk, since there's no election this year, that's savings of about fifty-four thousand. Admin services decreased about forty thousand because of the class and comp study that was done in the prior year, so we don't have that this year. General operations decreased by a little over seventy-seven thousand, and this is mainly because, as a city in whole, we have very few liability cases, and so our insurance liability rates came down quite a bit, and we had very favorable rates from the J P I A. So we're doing well there. And then public works, you know, I think we're planning on having a full-time director there, so there'll be some savings there, because we won't need the consultant as much. So those are some savings to, I just wanted to point out, it's not all bad news. Any questions on those expenditures? Moving, moving on, we're getting to the C I P plan. This is the capital improvement projects that we have. So in total, it's, so there's a carryover for twenty-two, twenty-three, which is gonna carry over into twenty-three, twenty-four. And this is the funds that are the funding of it. So the carryover is about twelve million dollars, and then the new projects gonna, are gonna come in at one point six million. And the details of this are in the back of that booklet of all the different projects that are going on. And this is the different funding, so you can see general fund is really just three hundred eighty-four thousand. Any questions on C I P or expenditures?
I have one question, and I think we've spoke about it in the years past. We used to get the JAG fund, and I know there's been a little bit back and forth. Was there a determination with that, with regards to that fund, on whether or not they're still issuing it, or is it phased out completely?
The JAG, I'd have to look in that, is that the?
We used to use it to fund the sheriffs on the fourth, I think, or the, either the fourth of the parade.
Yeah, it was, it was, the JAG fund was, ideally, it was to fund the fireworks detail. We received, we rewarded the amounts, we never received it. We, we had a back and forth with the administration, the federal administration on why we received the funds. It wasn't a huge amount, it was about ten thousand, and every year decreased. I'm not sure if it's been phased out altogether, but they refused to give us money, they said. And part of this was our, the people that were on the list to receive it had all moved on. Steve, Marla, a lot of the people in finance moved on, so we had no passwords, and they weren't gonna give it to us, so they refused to give us the money. So we had to decline the money, now we could reapply for the future years, but I, I don't know if it's been phased out or not, but that was the reason why we were unable to get the money in the past.
Okay, but there's a possibility we can still.
There is a possibility, it is, it is a smaller amount, it's only about ten thousand dollars for the size of our city. But it's money, it's money, yes, of course.
Okay, thank you.
And just to point out, it hasn't been received in the past couple of years, so yeah. Any other questions?
Is this your final?
No, there's a few more slides to go through.
I'll wait to get to the final one.
Again, just, I just wanted to kind of point out a couple of other things, community development revenue. I just think this is important for everybody to kind of see. These are the revenues for twenty-three, twenty-four, you'll see the bottom line revenues. We're projecting seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is a big decrease from the current year we're in. The current year, when they had one point four million. So there's a decrease, it's almost seven hundred thousand dollar decrease. And I think this is just because, you know, the slowing of the economy, not as much construction going on. So this is gonna be a fairly substantial hit to the city, and it just drives more the point that we need to really keep on top of their fees and charge full recovery so that we don't fall further behind on these. The next slide's gonna show their fund balance, their kind of fund balance and financial overview. And you'll see that for the current year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we have five hundred and fifty-two thousand, which is a surplus. But the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four, we're looking at a deficit of three thirty-nine. That's just how the numbers are coming out, hopefully, you know, the economy doesn't slow down that much, but that's kind of what it's looking like it's gonna be.
Say that last word again, the surplus deficit?
So in twenty-two, twenty-three, the current year, when right now, there's a surp, projecting a surplus of five fifty-two, but then the following year, the twenty-three, twenty-four, we're looking at a deficit of three thirty-nine. And this is just within the community development. And that's mainly because of decrease of revenues, just because it looks like it's gonna slow down a little bit because of the economy.
Oh, quick question, but this is more for maybe another later in the future info. Do all the cities operate, where they, and I don't know this question, or if anyone else knows, do all cities operate where they have staffs or their planning department, their budget is contingent upon, or they fund it through the fees that are collected, or do some work it into, you know, the general fund? Like, I guess, I don't know, that's a few, it doesn't need to be answered now, but.
It really just depends on the city and the size of the city, I think, but in general, it's, they try to get full cost recovery. But it really just depends on how they do that from city to city, and kind of their fund balances and the health of the city.
I'd be interested in looking at how the other ones, and if that would at least help with budgeting purposes, but that's for a future meeting, I was just curious on that.
He's not done yet.
No, I'm not done yet, a couple more slides to go. Community events, so these are all the different events that we have, I believe there's ten in total. And I, I think earlier was mentioned about the Blues and Music Festival, so in the budget subcommittee, it was recommended to not have the Blues Festival, and instead, we'd have the Music Festival. So that's why you'll see a budget of zero next to the Blues Festival. But then in total, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred for the community events. I do want to point out, an oversight there was in the budget book, the numbers, they don't include for National Night Out, Neighborhood Watch, and Public Safety Outreach, each of them has a budget of two thousand. In the actual book, the numbers is listed as zero, so those are just the oversights. So I think that when council adopts the budget, to make sure to include that as well, the oversight of the two thousand for each of those three events.
On the, oh, before you move on. So there was zero allocated for the Blues Festival.
Yes.
Oh, also for the music, did we decide already?
No, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna, we're, we're, the subcommittee, the budget subcommittee recommended that, and that you guys can decide. You can bring that up as a comment to fund both if you want.
Please do.
Okay.
Almost done, just a couple of other items I wanted to bring up. Cuts that were made by either council, subcommittee. So we reduced, it was recommended to reduce the discretionary funding for each member by five hundred dollars each, down to twenty-five hundred instead of the three thousand. Limited the number of council member attendees to each conference to a maximum of two members for each conference, so that's savings of little over fifteen thousand. There is a recommendation to reduce the number of conferences for the city manager. And then also another big item was that, you know, we discussed with community services, between myself, that director, city manager, and also the budget subcommittee, the level of service, if they were to fully reopen, meaning weekends, and have the youth athletics programs fully as it was before, they would need, I think it was around fourteen part-time employees, a thousand hours each. So that would be four hundred and eighty-five thousand, so basically, it was recommended that at this point, we don't do that fully reopening of it, and just keep it as is. You know, just because the way the economy is, economy is, we don't know if we can really, we probably could not handle that right now. So those were kind of the big recommendations. And then two other things as far as potential cost and why the surplus of the one point, one point one million comes into play. There is the potential litigation with the Metro Green Line, we don't know exactly where that's gonna go. That could easily wipe out the one point one million, depending on how that goes. And then also, the city is currently in negotiations with the union regarding the MOUs. So that will, I feel, definitely have some sort of an impact, depending on how that negotiation comes out. So that will further reduce that one point one million surplus, and, you know, honestly, that could be wiped out fairly quickly, depending on how the negotiations go and how the litigation and all of that goes with the Green Line. And with that, just wanna make sure. Yes, that's it, that concludes my report, happy to answer any questions and go over anything you have.
All right, thank you for the report, let's, let's go with council.
Okay. Two, right now. Mr. Public Work Director.
Yes, sir.
Our orange shirts, are those contracted out, they cleaned every week? The three young men that were up there, they were disgusting. They had paint all over them, black paint all over them. Do we get those replaced every few months, or is it contracted, part of the uniform contract?
Part of the uniform contract.
Do they come back cleaner than they had on, or is that the way they come back, all stained?
They may have come directly from the field or didn't have a chance to change.
That's not normal, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Now, the first question, and then I know this is gonna be a sore subject, but the seven thousand dollars we wanna pay for the metro buses, I have concern with that. I don't mind giving a thousand dollars out of my discretionary fund, I think we should all do that, but we should not use general fund money to do this, because we'll be opening a can of worms. If we do it for the metro, I'm gonna use this Little League, for example. Little League goes to Dodger night, they'll come in and ask the council for a bus to go to Little League night. I remember when Lucille Smith School was, P T was hard pressed for buses, and on my discretionary fund, I paid for a bus. I think that may should come out of our discretionary funds. If we, we don't use it by the end of this month, we lose it. So I don't think it should be general fund, I should, I think it should be our discretionary fund, and I'm willing to give a thousand dollars out of my discretionary fund for the buses. Okay, then off, who's next? Yeah, we can.
We could just start with that one.
Yeah, that way you don't have to lose it in conversation.
I guess, and, I mean, I'm ready. I, I disagree with that point a bit, because this is a major, like, infrastructure project that's not gonna be, you know, a regular thing. It's, it's, I view it as a very important issue for the residents at Wauwawu. I do have some suggestions, though, because, you know, I think it should be for Landale residents first. You know, I know we might have other people coming on, I think we should put restrictions on it. I think we should put an R S V P, that way in case there's not, you know, the two people, or if we don't get enough people signing up for it, we at least can reduce it to one. But I feel as though it's a really big issue that's important for the city, and it's not a regular thing. I think this is something that comes, you know, once in a while, it's something we've been fighting for, so I do think that it deserves to be budgeted for. You know, I'm happy to give two from the discretionary fund to reduce it, but I, I don't think, I think regardless, we should have it budgeted, whether it comes out, and that's just my point of view.
I, I would say that, I mean, I too believe this is important to make sure that, you know, our residents have an opportunity to participate. You, you mentioned councilman, some of the other ones, like going to the Dodger games or whatever, those are sports and leisure activity, and although those are very important, you know, for as socialization is concerned, but they are that, they're, they're on sports and recreation opportunities and what have you. This speaks to the quality of life issues. It's a one-time, it's, it's, it's a one-time expenditure, but it's an issue that we're gonna be living with for who knows how long, right, for the next fifty years, hundred years, or what have you. And so I think it warrants, given the opportunity for residents who may not otherwise be able to go downtown, to participate in this very important event. Now, I am wondering, you know, seven thousand, I don't know if that was, how many buses you get for seven thousand?
The quality.
What the quality of the buses. I do know, like, for instance, in the city of L.A., we, we have a, they have a pretty robust bus program. And we get buses all the time. And those are, and, and a lot of times, they're, they're for recreational activities or what have you. So I, I would think if it was important enough for, to do recreational type of activities, that it's definitely important enough to do something such as the quality of life, such as the Metro Green Line. But I'm just wondering, how do we come with, with the cost, the seven thousand, what's the, what's the loading capacity? What we don't wanna do, we wanna have a good show, but we don't wanna provide an opportunity for any and everyone to get on the bus. You know, that, that may not necessarily be speaking to the issue of Landale, let's put it that way, right? Because once we have the bus, right, then anyone is able to get on the bus, right, once you make a, on the bus. But if you, like you were saying, suggest that if Landale residents have preference, we kind of know what issue they're gonna be speaking to, or what have you. It may vary, because obviously, because there's three choices, or what have you, but we kind of know. So we kind of would reduce someone deciding, you know what, I'm gonna rally a group of folks that otherwise wouldn't participate and that don't live in Landale, and we're gonna put them on the bus as well. Some call these people rubble rousers, outside influencers, if you will. But we're gonna make sure we reduce that, so I'm just wondering, what's the capacity of the buses, seating capacity?
Mr. Mayor, we just, we use the, the residents that organized the bus trip, we use their estimates that they provided in email, I think it was roughly thirty-two hundred bucks per bus. I didn't see the capacity of that, but we just estimated roughly and gave us a round figure of seven thousand. Just depending on how many sign up, but as the council mentioned, if they, we can limit it to Landale residents and then R S V P, and then maybe we'll end up with one bus, it could be reduced down.
And this might be actually a good opportunity, ask the city of Redondo if they would, if they want, you know, what we're doing, and possibly they could, you know, fund their own buses, because I know we did have a lot of Redondo residents come here as well, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah, there was thoughts that they were gonna fund a bus, but I haven't heard those discussions. But if, if, if we're gonna fund the buses and Redondo Beach residents can get on our bus, then that kind of takes incentive for Redondo Beach to fund the bus.
Call share. Well, but the limitation.
Be call sharing, yeah. Those are my thoughts, any, anyone have any other thoughts on that?
My only, my comment was just going to be, I don't use my discretionary fund, so I absolutely would contribute my money from my discretionary fund, because I agree, this is a really big issue in our city, it's forever going to impact our city, not just fifty or a hundred years, it's forever. So that being said, this is a quality of life issue, I don't think that we should lessen that, and I'm absolutely okay with keeping it in general fund, because I think that this is the one, one-time deal. Maybe we could ask Redondo Beach to split costs. I would appreciate that. Maybe the Redondo Beach residents are, should be right there with us, because it's, it's something that our two cities are going to be impacted by.
Yeah, I'm gonna put a thousand back in my discretionary, back in the general fund too, to offset the seven thousand dollars we have budgeted.
I'm, I'm fine with however you wanna do it, but, I mean, I, I think the, you know, it's, it's worthy enough to be in the general fund, because discretionary fund is exactly what it is used for, to support organizations, community groups, or what have you. And so for me, I would rather for it to be in the general fund. Obviously, if someone wants to put their discretionary fund in the general fund, they, they can do that as well.
Doesn't have to be decided here either.
Right, no, you don't have, you could decide it at any time. No, you don't have, you could decide at any time. Okay, you had a, there was another item.
No, that was my two. About the uniforms and.
Uniform, okay. I don't have any issue with the uniforms. Okay, who else have, wanna, wanna speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat the three, two thousand dollars that we missed on the budget? It was National Night Out.
Yeah, one second. So it's National Night Out, Neighborhood Watch, and Public Safety Outreach.
And what is Public Safety Outreach?
Uh, Public Safety Outreach is the Coffee with a Cop events.
Isn't that the same as National Night Out?
Uh, National Night Out has its own budgets, 'cause it's a much larger event. So, no, the, the, the National Night Out, we hire a DJ. Uh, we did some raffle prizes before, so there's more cost for that particular event. Coffee with a Cop is relatively inexpensive.
And how many are we planning to have?
Uh, well, we were planning to have one, uh, a few weeks ago, but because of, uh, the pet fair, we decided to push it till June. So we're probably be having one in the next two or three weeks, just before the Fourth of July event.
Just to have one, it's two thousand dollars?
No, no, that's for quarterly. So we pay about five hundred per.
Thank you.
Of course.
And then the Neighborhood Watch, how are, how are we handling that? Or how is it coming together? 'Cause as far as I know, we haven't had one.
We haven't had one, and, and we've had a lot of trouble gr- uh, getting interest in, in Neighborhood Watch. That money was allocated as a placeholder, so that should we have them, we could have refreshments and things like that for the attendees, um, with the goal of being every two to three weeks. But again, it's very difficult to get anyone to participate. We do get signup sheets at the Coffee with the Cops. We do press it, uh, with, with the attendees at Coffee with the Cop to say, hey, would you like to spend more time with law enforcement? Get them patrolling your neighborhood? You can have a meeting once a month at your house. Um, we do get people signing up, but then when we follow up, there's little interest to do it.
Okay.
So that's, that's a challenge for that.
I had a question on the festivals. Uh, the music festival, one of which was a savings, oh, the Blues Festival was a savings of twelve thousand. So I assume that's about how much it costs to put on the Blues Festivals. What about, um, do we have any estimate of, of how much it would cost to put on the Music Festival? No, those two different events.
It's twelve thousand.
It's twelve thousand for the, uh, Music Festival?
The Blues Festival came in at twelve thousand, two thirty-five for this current year. And the Music Festival, we have a budget of twelve thousand.
So about twelve thousand.
Yeah. They're about the same.
The, the thought in the subcommittee, mayor and council, was that you can merge them together with some of the Blues and just have a multi, kinda, not like Coachella, but you know how they have different genres? So that was the kind of the thinking in the subcommittee, was we could bring them all together in one big, if you wanted to go with one or just.
So wouldn't that just be a mu- a Music Festival then?
I think that's what we're calling it, a Music Festival.
No, no, I'm seeing two. I'm seeing a Music Festival, that's one, and I'm seeing the Blues Festival.
Right, so we were thinking, if we eliminate the Blues Festival, some of the Blues folks and vendors, I talked to Mr. Asties about that, can easily merge over to the Muzi Festival, if that's the prerogative of the council.
But it's a successful event right now as a Blues Festival, correct?
You're saying do away with the Blues Festival.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're saying, basically, if you merge them, you're doing away with the Blues Festival, because the Blues Festival is that particular genre of music, a type of music. The Music Festival would be, could include Blues, but it's.
That's what we're saying, so that was the thought of the subcommittee, but it's up to the council and your prerogative, if you wanna keep them.
So if we did both, that'd be twelve and twelve, basically, we're seeing.
Twenty-four thousand.
I, and I have, I'll just say it right. I think we should keep the Blues. Um, and that's because when you start changing the theme and all that, there's extra marketing that would need to go into it. The people, the following that the Blues Festival already has, those people will continue to, I mean, I know we, we, you know, put off for a little bit, but they have it in their mind to come each year. It's been pretty successful. Um, and I, the last conversation I remember having on this council was that we were gonna do two. Um, and it's kinda hard doing a Music Festival, because you still kinda gravitate towards a theme. You know, I, the beach, what is it? The Beach Festival, I can't remember, Beach Life Festival. Like, they kinda gravitate towards, like, rock and punk and reggae. So you have kind of a theme that goes along, and so I'm just hesitant to change it, especially during this time, because your cost, you're gonna not, it's gonna be a little bit of a, a, you know, you're trying to play around with what music do we get, what's popular, what do people like? And so, you know, you're always not gonna get people that like Blues. I don't listen to it particularly, but I just think that it already has the following it's set in. Uh, I think we should leave it for now, and then look at the Music Festival as a separate, um, event.
The, one of the reasons that we picked the Music Festival is, in the past years, our Longdale, most of our Longdale residents were not attending. The, the people that are attending the Blues Festival are from other cities that are following the bands. Um, and we wanna ma- include our residents, 'cause it's funds that belong to our, not belong to the residents, but funds that we should be using towards our residents. We could add, I'm okay adding the Blues, but the, the main thing is that our Longdale residents, most likely, will not attend it. If you look, if you do a survey of who attends those, uh, the Blues events, it's the, the followers of those bands, not Longdale residents.
That's, that is correct. Most of our groupies have followed the Blues Festival. Shirley and I discussed it for, we were here for about three or four hours. And a lot of attendees are just there for the car show. Those are the people that stay there. Once the, the group, the Blues group comes, the groupies are there. Once they're done, the groupies leave. We did a survey, Robert, you remember, we did a survey, what, three years, four years ago? For Music Festival, different music? And their residents, they came back with four different things. That's why Shirley and I would de- decided, well, we suggested that we do a Music Festival, not a Blues Festival. Let's try the Music this year, and if it doesn't work out, go back to the Blues Festival. But the Blues fell, so only raw attended because of the cars are there and the groupies are there. Let's do a basic Music Festival. If you walk the neighborhood after the event, you ask residents around the park, why they didn't show up? He says, well, there's no Hispanic music, or there's no any music. The young kids, well, there's no ninety music. We have to cater to the, the people of Longdale, residents of Longdale, not these outside groups that come in from, like Shirley said, out-of-towners.
I think I still disagree to a point, because it's kinda the people you're interacting with, I guess, for the most part. Um, I know other cities throw events, and I go to other cities, too, and I enjoy them as well. Um, you know, that's not to say that not, I, I do think we do have some residents, um, and at least a lot of South Bay community. I'm just hesitant, because you're never gonna satisfy everybody, even with Spanish music. Um, you know, I listen to different kinds, but there's, you know, there's multitude of different kinds of music that you can have for just, you know, that genre alone. So I, I, I still feel strongly, I think it's a pretty successful event. Um, you know, uh, I, I don't know if this is just people, you know, playing it by ear, or we've actually, you know, surveyed the whole community. Um, but, you know, I, I'd hate to see it go. I, I don't know that I agree with that point.
We did survey the whole, the whole city. We did a mailer. And he came back with those answers.
A mailer?
Yeah, we did a mailer, and they.
It wasn't the online?
The online thing, yes.
Yeah, you're not gonna get, you know, everybody responding to.
You don't get everybody responding anyway, right? What we do.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
But, um, I, I, it's just my point, so I just disagree still.
Yeah, I do take your, uh, take your point, um, ca- um, councilman. And, uh, I'm a pro temp, but I, I'm, I'm kinda still with the, um, the councilwoman on this. In, in terms of, every year, or just about every year, I go to, um, Long Beach for the festivals, and I definitely go to Gardena. That's a, a do-not-miss, um, event. And when those events, um, started out, you can guarantee that it was a mixture of, of people supporting it. And it wasn't a lot of, um, Gardena residents. It was a good number of Gardena residents. But then, as it grew, more Gardena residents started to come as well, as people from, you know, from the region. And it has grown into what it is, um, today, where you got, um, people from, from all over the, um, um, the region comes, um, to that, um, Gardena, um, Blues Festival. They actually call it Jazz Festival. And it's also an opportunity for Gardena to brand itself and showcase itself, um, not to the south, just to the South Bay, to, but to the whole, um, region. 'Cause when they came on the scene, of course, they were competing against, you know, the, um, Long Beach, the LA Jazz is a, you know, um, one, what's the, the big one they have down in, um, Orange County, um, Ocean, Newport, Newport Beach, you know, what have you. And so they was competing. So now, of course, people that follow those, you know, um, concerts, go to the Gardena Jazz Festival. They was able to build that up, because they stuck with it. They, they stayed with a particular type of music, instead of changing the formula, whatever they found the formula that, that worked, and they stayed with it. When you go there, you know what you're gonna get. You signed up for, for, um, Jazz. I call it, it's supposed to be Jazz, but some of that stuff is R and B, not really Jazz, but that's a whole different story. You know, whatever. But the audience signed up, they know what they're gonna get, right? When, when they go there, so. I remember working for, way when I was a young lad, um, a concert promoter, back when I was in, in the entertainment, um, field. Although I'm not Jamaican, I've had a lot of jobs. And one of, which was working for a concert promoter. And one of the things that, that, that I learned from that is that the music have to be consistent. When you, especially if it's a, a certain location or what have you, or you're trying to brand a certain location, that's what, and that's what concert promoters do. They try to brand that location, so you know, every year, you're going out to the desert, or what have you. And you know what you're gonna get, or what have you, you know, what kind of atmosphere it's gonna be. So if you're a parent or whatever, you're bringing your kids, you know whether or not that's fitting for the kids or what have you. It's not fitting for the kids one year, and then the next year, say, oh, what is, what is going on here? You know, it's not fitting for the, you know, for the kids or what have you, 'cause you know what you're getting or what have you. I think this is an opportunity, if we, if we stay with it, we can continue to build it. I have no problems having a, another Music Festival where we have a mixture of music. You know, um, in some communities, they have like even two stages. You know, you have a minor stage, and you have the major stage, and sometimes going on at the same times. You know, um, I don't have any problem with that. But for us, building name recognition and building a following, people say, I went to Longdale. I've been to Longdale. I know every year, this is gonna come, I'm gonna go to Longdale. We've got folks that comes from Rancho Cucamonga. We have folks coming from Longdale. Right back, folks coming from Redondo Beach, and I think that's a good thing, or what have you. So I would be in favor of keeping the Blues. And if we agree to add the Music Festival, but definitely keeping, um, the Blues.
I only agree with that, mayor, as well, because I'm thinking back as you're speaking. I put on high school reunions for Longdale High, and there are times when people can't afford to come to my reunion. And many times, they say, well, let's meet up at the Blues Festival. So therefore, I feel like that in itself is important, because that is the Longdale residents. That's kids that grew up here in Longdale. And, um, if that's, I, I would be, I, I am not opposed to a Music Festival, but I, I, I kinda tend to believe that let's not fix what's working for us, or let's not break what's working for us, one or the other.
And one more point, sponsorships. That could help with, you know, getting another Music Festival going.
Yes. I think that's worth underscoring the, the, uh, on sponsorships. Because a lot of these Music Festivals, they do have sponsors, of course, including Gardena, they have sponsors. You, you, you pay some pretty good money to get your, your name on the collateral material and the banners and other kinda things. They're looking for those opportunities. So rather than the city bearing a hundred percent of the cost, having sponsors is a good opportunity. But those sponsorships are driven by the numbers. How much they're willing to pay for sponsorships is driven by the numbers, 'cause the first thing they're gonna ask you is, what's your attendance? Right? And if you change, keep changing your formula, then you don't have a stable attendance. You can't really garner the amount of sponsorship that you may otherwise would if. Okay, so where are we?
Do we add another twelve thousand? Or to our budget for the Blues Festival? Or are we voting to Music and just keeping Blues?
I think that might be a bit of a process. I think that's something that would have to be studied on, you know, what kind of music you're gonna be doing, how, like. I would be in favor of maybe waiting, because it, it is something that takes a while, and we're already June, and the, it's in, uh, is it September?
Yes.
Yes, September, mayor and councilman.
Yeah, it seems like a, you're gonna need, you're gonna wanna gain traction, so people actually attend. And so that's gonna be a lot of, you know, some marketing and, um, newsletters and whatnot. So I would say that that one, maybe put on hold until we can look at it better.
But are we okay with moving forth with the, um, the Blues?
Those three.
It's three and two. So you guys are moving on with it?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Uh, my, my whole, I, um, at this point, it's all to the benefit of the residents, to have an event and give back. I would rather do Music, but there's three against two, so the twelve thousand from Music Festival will move up to the Blues Festival. I don't wanna add more to the Blues Festival. But.
Right.
We could just, since it's three to two, we move the twelve thousand from Music to Blues. But I do wanna see if we could get a second event for next year's budget.
And I would agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
And it doesn't have to be in the same month.
And it should be spread, yeah, spread apart, yeah.
The other one could be September.
Has to be spread apart. You're right. Okay, well, let's do that.
We're, uh, moving the twelve thousand over to the Blues.
Correct.
A flat twelve thousand.
A flat twelve thousand.
No more, no more. Twelve thousand.
Yeah, twelve thousand.
And you can take the two hundred thirty-five from my discretionary.
We're saving that.
I'll write you a check.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll make a note?
I'll be a sponsor.
Make a note?
We, we have that down, mayor.
Yeah, you have your name in it, sponsor. Okay.
Get your check, we can.
No, partially sponsored by. Okay. What, what's next, Mr. Turner? What, what are we doing next?
Uh, angular discussion.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Mr. Mayor, before you, before you go to adoption, just wanna make it, uh, just real quick, on the, and Harant brought this up, on the Community Center. So just so we're clear, we're only open Monday through Friday. We're not taking reservations, we don't have, we're not open on Saturdays. So I just wanted to make sure, and then we're not doing the sports, the sports, uh, when we do the sports, the extra cooker sports, we're not doing that because of the cost. So I just wanted to make sure you're, you guys are aware, 'cause I have a, periodically, I get emails from council members asking if we're open. We don't have staff, Mike does not have the staff, to run reservations. If he were, we would need six more staff, plus a coordinator, so about seven, to run weekends. So right now, we're only open Monday through Friday. I just wanna make sure that was clear on that, too.
I, I saw there, I guess the one question I have, though, is the security guard gonna still be monitoring, though?
Yes, they're here, that'd be an item on the agenda. Um, so they would be secure, looking at the Community Center, as well as the patio, where we had issues, and then throughout the whole city as well, if you guys move forward on that item.
And then if, for, if we don't end up using all the surplus, we can look at possibly bringing it back and doing an adjustment?
Yeah, mid-year, we generally bring it, or anytime the council deems we have any extra funds, we're watching the economy, that's something. I just didn't want, uh, I wanted everyone to be aware that we're still not open on the weekends, still, because of this lack of staffing and costs.
Oh, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, are there any more discussions on the, on the budget? Okay. Seeing none, let me get back to the beginning of the agenda.
And I'm making a motion to accept the budget as written, with corrections.
I'm making a motion to accept the budget as written with corrections.
Okay, give me one second. Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the budget with the, um, stated amendments. And seconded by Suarez. Is there any discussion, further discussion? All right, would the council please vote?
For item fourteen, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number fifteen. Hold on, let's see. Fifteen, right?
Yep.
Yes, thank you, council, mayor and council members. Uh, item fifteen, this is the appropriations limit, this is just the annual limit, uh, that needs to happen. Uh, so this is the GAN Prop four, um, referred to as Article thirteen B of the Constitution of the State of California. There's a calculation that's done based off of, um, population and, uh, it's based off of population and per capita income growth. The adopted limit is, uh, for twenty-two, for twenty-three, twenty-four is forty-one million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars. Uh, proceeds of the taxes at sixteen million, six hundred fifty-one. Therefore, we are under the limit by twenty-five million, so everything is good to go. Uh, we are well within the limit for the GAN appropriations. That concludes my report.
Okay, any, any, um, comments or discussion on the report?
No motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Quaver, seconded by Kearney. Any discussion on the motions? All right, would the council please vote?
For item number fifteen, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item sixteen, approve agreement with CASC Engineering and Consulting.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, um, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Item before you, uh, it's, uh, a contract regarding a contract that the city currently has with CASC Engineering Consultant. Uh, little bit of background, uh, as council is aware, Clean Water Act and MPDES is, is a federal program that all cities, jurisdictions need to comply with all the, um, you know, laws and regulations. Uh, in LA County, there are eighty-four cities, uh, plus City of Longdale that are co-permity under the primary permit holder, which is LA County. Anyway, lockin', uh, making the long story short, uh, CASC has been doing the services of keeping the city in compliance, uh, as far as the Clean Water Act. Uh, you know, for the recent years. The complexity of the variety of different activities that are involved in this effort. Uh, the city doesn't have the in-house expertise. So the, um, their contract is set to expire end of this month. And so staff contacted CASC, you know, they did honor the current rates that are charged us in the current contract. And so they've been doing a great job. Uh, so our recommendation tonight is to renew their contract for another three years with the option of, uh, you know, uh, renewal for two additional year on top of the three. Uh, you know, at fifty thousand, uh, dollars, not to exceed per year, which is hundred and fifty. So that concludes my staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, are there any questions in the staff report? All right, thank you for that report. What is the pleasure of this body concerning item sixteen?
A motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Quaver to approve and seconded by Hoffman-Gorman. Are there any discussions, discussions on the motion? Seeing none, would the council please vote?
For item number sixteen, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, item seventeen, approval of a month-to-month agreement with Clean Street.
Yeah, uh, so regarding this item, mayor, members of the city council, as, uh, as you all know, uh, Clean Street has been providing the street sweeping service for the past twenty-two years, um, to the city. Um, they've done, they've done a satisfactory service. Um, their current contract, um, is, um, eighteen thousand and some change per month, or two hundred and eighteen thousand, or almost two hundred and nineteen thousand annually. Um, the curb miles for residential streets, business district streets and parking lot, city parking lot are all in, in your staff report. Uh, there's a total of hundred and fifty-seven, uh, and some change curb miles per week, uh, included in their services. Um, anyways, their contract, uh, was set to expire, uh, end of February of this year. And, um, staff contacted them, you know, regarding their rates, uh, you know, if they could hold it. Uh, they, they were not agreeable to that, therefore, uh, staff issued a request for proposal. We went out, surprisingly, uh, well, maybe not surprisingly, on, uh, April eighteen, we only received one proposal, one bid, which was Clean Street. Uh, now they're operating under a different name, SCA of California, doing business as Clean Street. So in discussing the matter with the city manager, we decided to perhaps go stronger outreach, do it one more time, you know, in hopes of getting better, uh, results in our RFP. Uh, and in the meantime, you know, we got into the negotiation with Clean Street, and they agreed to hold the current rates, uh, you know, on a month-to-month basis until the end of the year. So we were basically just buying some time for the second RFP. Um, so that's, that's what the item is for. Um, and, uh, so the cost until December thirty-first, first is, uh, not to exceed hundred and nine thousand and some change, which is half of their annual, um, contract amount. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one, I have one question. Do we have any idea, um, why no one responded to the request for proposals? I mean, Clean Street did, but, you know, they're the incumbent.
I, um, I have, uh, learned from the staff that in previous times, there was also one bid, you know, received by, by Clean Street, you know, I don't know how long ago. Uh, but this time their cost was significantly higher than the two, two hundred and eighteen thousand. Uh, I mean, understood, you know, costs are rising in all areas, you know, but we don't know. You, you know, I also checked with the city attorney's office if prevailing wages would be required. Uh, and yes, it is required, you know, so we can't let that go.
Yeah, because it's public works, exactly.
Correct.
Any? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said it's, they continue, continue it at their current rate?
That's correct.
Well, in this, in the book, you have eighteen thousand dollars. If you look in the budget, the last three billings were only sixteen thousand, so that's an increase of over two thousand dollars. So it's not the same. It's two thousand dollars more. And if I'm not mistaken, we had some issues with Clean Sweep about ghost charging for things they didn't do. Maybe the city manager can elaborate on that. So, yeah, thank you, mayor and council. So we had a little bit of an issue, my understanding. Um, there was curb miles charged to the city, and, uh, this company was working off those curb miles they charged us for, basically back billing and making up for the curb miles. Uh, now we're watching public works, Ahmad and his crew are watching real close now. So, uh, uh, that, that did happen, so we are working with them still. We're thankful that, you know, all these, I guess, all these street sweeping contracts have doubled and gone up. Um, and, and the issues that have gone on with, uh, you know, other street sweeping. We are doing a, a better outreach, so hopefully get a better response rate.
So what about the two thousand?
It did go up two thousand dollars. Yeah, apparently. Sixteen thousand, well, almost two thousand dollars. Before sixteen thousand and change? I think that's, uh, I'd have to check the last contract, but I think that's consistent with what we did month-to-month, too. The previous one that went up, Ahmad, is that?
Yeah, I, I need to check on that. I, I don't know what the discrepancy is between the sixteen and the eighteen, but, you know, that's, that's a good point.
It did, it did go up the previous month-to-month contract. I think it jumped there.
Possibly, but, but I can check on that.
Consistent with, but we could check on that. Look under your last warrant, you'll see the cost. One was a forty-eight thousand and change, that's sixteen thousand dollars per month, and the last one was sixteen thousand dollars and change. And now it's going to eighteen thousand dollars and change.
Yeah, my, my understanding was that, um, it was, it was eighteen per month, you know, but, but I will, I will check on that.
Okay.
If there's a discrepancy.
Okay, so you'll check on that, okay. Is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, what is the pleasure of the, the board concerning item seventeen?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made to, for approval by Suarez and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? All right, would the council please vote?
For item number seventeen, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item eighteen, armed security services.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Um, the staff report you have before you is, determines, uh, the future of what we wanna go with the armed security services. As you recall, a few months ago, we discussed, um, protection for the community services building, the upstairs patio. At the time, we're considering building a wall or gates or somewhere, keeping it secure. Um, a lot of those plans seemed unworkable. Um, we were also seeing increased crime incidences at our facilities and buildings and our parks. Um, we talked to some other cities and it's thought an armed security detail might be a good way to go to supplement our sheriff's department. Um, not only to reduce crime and to secure our buildings, but also to assist with things after hours, including homeless and dealing with after-hour vendors, which are quality of life issues. Um, our sheriff's department does a very good job at handling all our calls, but when priority calls come out, vendor calls and homeless calls are gonna be a very low priority. Um, by bringing in a security detail, we could have a very focused and targeted response to homeless issues and to illegal vendors, as well as doing regular rounds of all our facilities and our parks. Um, several interviews were conducted, and we read through several bids and did several interviews with different agencies. And we are pleased to announce that after going over all these details, we felt Southwest Patrol offered the best safety and a best sense of security for our city. Um, factors such as experience, training, references from other cities, and personal interviews all played a role in reaching this conclusion. Southwest Patrol has nearly three decades of service, um, and they have a reputation of, as a provider of premium services, and also have long-tenured employees, which are things that we felt were, were premium and important for us. We, uh, believe that Southwest Patrol could do a very good job for us. We do know they do work for other cities. They do work for other municipalities, and they do private security as well, both armed and unarmed guards. Um, I do have Mike Gagun, uh, the operations manager of Southwest Patrol here tonight. He can answer some questions if you'd like. Uh, and also I can answer any questions you have. Uh, but his recommendation to go with Southwest Patrol as our armed security detail.
And mayor and council, I just wanna add to this, uh, this was, you know, the directive to, rather than change the community center, to change the facade, was to look at this, uh, unarmed security force. As, uh, Mr. Reyes has mentioned, this is to augment the sheriffs. We have a lot of quality of life issues going on in the city, as the council's aware. And I wanna point out, and Sergeant Smith may not like this, but Sheriff Luna has mentioned, because LAPD has mentioned this, too. This is not a knock at them, but some of those quality of life issues, they're, they're looking at not responding to, such as homeless encampments. Uh, they're looking at vendor enforcement. Those are the things that I heard when I went to the city managers' conference with the sheriffs. So that was a little concerning, so we need to come up with a way to augment some of these things that we have going on in the city. And then also show a presence with some security, um, in throughout the city and, and address some issues that we, you know, that go on and occur. Especially on the weekends, I get calls from residents or text messages about things that are going on, that sometimes the sheriffs, they're, they're spread really thin in the southwest area, so they may not be able to respond right away, and that residents, a lot of times, demand that services right away, so. We're hopeful that this will work out real well, and we'll monitor it, and maybe even look at expanding it as well.
Can you remind me again what hours they would be here? And what days of the week, and how many officers we're talking about?
Of course. So, uh, the budget we were looking at, uh, we actually negotiated with Mike. We got it at a lower price than they originally offered. So at the price we were quoted, we would roughly see about eleven hundred service hours a year, uh, in guard time. Uh, that breaks down to about a hundred and thirty hours per month, or twenty-two hours per week, something like that. So we thought it would best to have the guard from six PM until two AM every night. So when staff is leaving, the guards will just be arriving. Um, we do have events in the community center that go till eight o'clock. So we thought the best days would, would be on days like Tuesday and a Friday, so that when the guards are here, they can patrol the interior of the building. If there's events going on inside the building, if weddings or things like that. And then when the building closes at eight, they can patrol the city from eight until two AM. Um, they do have targeted focuses, locations that we would have them at. Um, there are ways to track the guards, so we know exactly that we're getting our money's worth, and they would have to log in every night. Um, and we could see that and track that. Um, also, um, they do have a twenty-four hour dispatch center. Um, we would not want that number to go to the public. We don't want them to get inundated with calls from the public for little things. We still, and we don't wanna have confusion with the public. We want the, the public to still call the sheriff's department for emergencies. But the number of the dispatch for Southwest would be available to the entire council and to select staff. Uh, Sean Moore, obviously, is our city manager, myself, and then anybody else we deem necessary. But they would be a targeted response specifically addressing homelessness issues, illegal vendors, and keeping all our city facilities safe. Um, uh, as I said, Mike and, uh, Southwest Patrol already does this for a number of cities, uh, Bellflower, Lakewood. This is what they do on a regular basis, dealing with the homeless, moving them along, dealing with vendors and moving them along. So in addition to all their patrols and security that they provide.
So how many officers, and is it two officers in one car, or if we, there are two? Or is it one officer per car?
It would be one officer per car and one officer per night that we deem it. Again, we'd only be getting about twenty-two hours a week, so we'd have to break that down, and it would, I'd have to sit down with Mike, and we'd have specific, get specific times and dates. But those are the dates that we were, or the times and dates that we were, we were considering, the nights, not specifically, not daytime shifts.
And when they run into a problem, who is their backup?
Well, the one enforcement, yeah. If, if there's, uh, Mike and his team are not looking to engage any, any, uh, individuals that are dangerous. Um, they do, do, they are basically an extra set of eyes and ears on, on, on the streets. So if they see, they're trained to, to, to contact sheriffs, be good witnesses, observe, and then pass along the information to sheriffs when they arrive. With, with homeless, of course, don't make contact and say, hey, gotta move along. If the homeless person gets threatening or violent, then of course they're gonna call the sheriffs. Um, same thing with our illegal vendors. If a taco truck or a food vendor doesn't wanna leave, they would, they would call sheriffs and say, hey, this guy needs to go.
That's what my question is, is like, our homeless man with the machete is when he ends up in a dangerous situation? That, that's where my question is coming from.
And I was gonna say, one of the advantages of having armed guard is, is these men are trained, these men and women are trained uh, to how to use a firearm, and they know how to also deescalate, things like that. But, um, should that become necessary, they are armed and, and there's a lot, there's, it's a much higher level of security than we've had in the past. So, uh, we did have an unarmed guard here for some time, and it was not very effective, it was sort of slovenly, didn't get a lot done. Um, the armed guards, armed guards have quite a bit more training and knowledge, and so we're gonna see a, a substantial upgrade in the amount of service we can receive from them.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Does, um, do they also collect the data? Um, 'cause you, like, they're engaging with persons experiencing homelessness, so do they actually make note and then they provide it? You know, whether or not someone's able to, like, say the person wants services? Um, or are they just, you know, description of the person, that way we have better, um, all around, we have better information?
Sure, and I, and I can, I can probably have Mike answer some of those specific questions if, if you'd like. I can introduce Mike and have him come up, Mike, if you, uh.
Mike, you have the, uh, I'm mad. Love to answer questions.
On the spot.
Yeah, on the spot.
Mike, if you wanna introduce yourself and who their officer to be.
Uh, Mike Gagun, uh, this is Alex Hogan. Works for one of our Bellflower details. He, um, he's probably the best when it comes to dealing with, with that stuff. To answer your question, uh, they'll try to get an ID, they usually take a picture of it. Uh, report gets sent out every, every night. Um, or they do a report that gets sent out, and then, you know, we usually review it before it gets sent out. Um, but yeah, they'll try to get IDs if they have one, obviously, or they'll get a name. And if they can't, then they can only, you know, do so much when it comes to that stuff.
Okay, and I only ask because I think it gives us a better idea of, of the contact, um, the amount of contacts we make and the patterns, just in general, so we're aware.
Yeah, and any information they get from the homeless, if the homeless is a person that's seeking help, we, I want that information. I can ask Mike to have his guards get that to me, and I can contact the next day.
Perfect. Thank you.
I have.
I do have a couple of questions. How does the sheriff department feel about this company? Have we asked them for their recommendation? And also, I thought, my understanding was that we were getting the security while we were closed, not until two AM.
We, and again, this is still up for grabs, and we, right now, we're just deciding to go with Southwest over others. The council can give any kind of input they want, they want. We're certainly open to everything. Mike Estes and I were on the panel together, as well as one of my staff. So, Mike had suggested six o'clock because he wanted some overlap when, when guests are in. We do have problems specifically inside the building, though. We had a homeless lady come to my building today, looking for her items that we confiscated over a month ago that were hidden under a stairwell. They've had problems, obviously, on the second floor patio before, so there is some need to have them there when the facility is open, because the homeless will bar doors and things like that to try to secure a way in after closing hours. So, we do want that, but again, any hours the council wants are acceptable to us, any, any times they want are acceptable, and any days that the council wants is fine with us.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I can answer a couple of questions, too. I actually called the cities of Lakewood and Bellflower and talked to them. They came, highly recommended this firm. They work well with the sheriffs. Sergeant Smith can come down and probably share his thoughts. I know they, they, this firm here that's in front of us, these two gentlemen, I thought they were, just their presence, I thought it was Hawthorne PD that came in. And that's why I asked, why is Hawthorne PD here? I mean, their presence just by itself shows you.
The uniform.
Both, the two cities that I spoke to, highly recommended this firm, and they're a big augment to their law enforcement services. I'll let Sergeant Smith go.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for having me back up. I personally have no experience nor knowledge of this company. However, I trust Mr. Reyes and his research that he's done, and the city manager and the research that he's done, and I agree with the city manager, they look very professional. And I look forward to working with them and, and coming up with mutual plans and, and quite frankly, making the city a little bit safer and addressing those quality of life issues that the deputies that I work with have a struggle getting to. So, I think it's, I think it's going to be good, and I think the relationship will be very well. Thank you.
I have, I have a couple of questions. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight. One, can you talk to me about your, your specific training that you have with the homeless services? And will every person who's assigned in Landale have that same level of, of training? Specific training with, with homeless? Because this is a job that can't just everyone do, homeless outreach. You just, you just can't. From where I work, we have a person that does, a homeless liaison, not a security person or whatever, but it's very effective because of his understanding of the homeless issues. He's able to communicate with them on a level for which they understand, and pretty successful in getting compliance, you know, for those who are going to comply with anyone. Right? So, those are the kind of things that I would be interested in knowing about specific training, rather than it just being assigned to security. Can you speak to me about the specific training that all the officers would have, or?
I don't know if I can give you a, a direct answer on, like, I wouldn't say they go through any kind of a course for homeless, it's kind of, you know, the guys are, or have been working with the company for a while, that, you know, train with other supervisors, and when they're training with these supervisors, they learn that way. You know, if, if there's any kind of event that, that, you know, the sheriff's department put on, or, or that they do put on, you know, we have no problem, you know, joining them and learning more about that stuff. You know, we have a pretty good, like, you can say, you know, he, he builds a relationship with these, with the homeless and, and just people in general. You know, so it's just more of a, it's hands-on, it's a hands-on type of thing. You know, you can write the perfect book about how to deal with homelessness, but until you're standing in front of them and being able to discuss certain things with them, you know, that, that, there's really no way of knowing what's going to happen at, at that time, other than, you know, dealing with it at that specific time.
So, I'm not familiar with, is it, was it Alhambra or La Habra? Which one was it? I'm not familiar with that city.
I'm sorry, Lakewood and Bellflower, where they're currently, the city's...
I thought I saw another city, but I am familiar with Bellflower and Lakewood. And it doesn't seem like they have a, that great of a homeless population. Could be wrong, but from what I understand and my dealings with, with them, so I'm just wondering how much of a homeless population, the, the cities that you guys work in, the company works in, how much interaction you would have with? Because it's one thing to have, you know, to have, to come in contact occasionally, you know, if you're in Lakewood, there's not like a lot of homeless people in Lakewood. I just don't, at least I don't see it. I mean, they could come out, you know, late on in the evening, so what have you. Whereas opposed to other cities, they're more visible throughout the day or what have you, you get, there's a apparent presence. So, I'm just trying to get a sense of how often you guys deal with homeless.
Yeah, and we could send, we can send a few reports over that we interact with, and you can go into more, more detail, but it is a significant amount of contacts, if you will.
Well, so I would, I would say on average, we'd be making contacts with people, at least in Bellflower where I work, we, we're making contact with people about every thirty minutes to an hour, and that's homeless that are usually, either they're nomadic and they move around the city, they're not staying in one place, or they're, they're just, they're looking for a place that they can sleep at night. Most of the homeless population comes out later in the evening, once the sun goes down. So, like, I'd say after eight PM, once the sun is really down, that's when I, I see a greater amount of them coming out in the streets, and a lot of times from, I'd say about eight PM until about midnight, they're just kind of, either they're walking around or they're on bicycles, they're moving around, and they're, they're kind of getting an idea of what's going on that night. And so, the main thing that the city of Bellflower has us doing is trying to move them either towards the homeless shelter, to get them to go into the homeless shelter, or moving them out of the city altogether. And since we are patrolling the entire city, it's made it a lot easier for us to be able to, you know, ensure that those, those transients are actually leaving the city, or they are actually going into the shelter. Because that's their main concern, is that they're not just staying out in the streets, sleeping on the sidewalk, sleeping in, in people's businesses and porches, and that they're actually getting the help that they need, whether it be mental health or, or the homeless shelter.
And usually, like Lakewood, or Bellflower and Lakewood, we've put, we've worked with them on putting, you know, pamphlets together that we can hand out to them. So, you know, anytime we make contact, hey, if you need the help, we have no problem giving you guys the help. Here's a pamphlet, call the number. I know there are some restrictions on, on certain situations. We had, you know, a lady that had like a three-year-old inside of a tent at a park. So, trying to get her shelter, you know, and not just saying, hey, here's a pamphlet. It's a little bit more than that. That's when, usually when we'll call, contact the deputies, because they have ways of contacting like that. Like a twenty-four hour type, type service where they'll book them out right then, or they'll, you know, make, make sure that that situation is taken care of.
And also, a lot of the...
Limited on some of that stuff.
A lot of the homeless also don't know about the services that are available to them, and so for us actually making contact with them and telling them some of the things that are available to them, they're a lot more inclined to either go to the shelter, whether it be to stay there, or to get more information on those services. So, it's kind of, we use the homeless shelter more as a hub, so we can send more people there, so that they can either branch out and get the services that they need, or they can be booked into a actual inpatient facility.
Okay. Let, let Councilman jump in here.
Oh, I was just going to add, I think the shelter you're referring to is the one that they dedicated. They, they have a, I looked it up online right now, a fifty-bed shelter in Bellflower, actually.
Yeah, it's on Lakewood and Cedar, yeah.
So, you work closely with it.
It's fairly new. I mean, I don't personally go there and, and interact with the staff there, but that's where we are sending most of the homeless population to. And a lot of them don't want to go there, but they'll go there to at least get, whether it be vouchers for certain services, or to get more information.
I was just going to bring that.
Okay.
I think that's indicative of their interaction with...
And one last question, and this is really for the, for the staff. Speak to me about the insurance and bonding. How does that, how does that come to play? Because we don't have to worry about insurance and bonding when we have the sheriffs, because it's so different.
Right, and my understanding is Southwest Patrol carries their own insurance and bonding. We, the fifty dollars an hour is all we're going to pay, and that covers their guards, their, their vehicles, their fuel, their uniforms, all costs are absorbed by them, which is part of the reason we wanted to get a premium guard service there. We didn't want a high turnover rate. If we have a, a low-paid guard, we anticipate that guard is going to be off, you know, and moving on after a month, when he gets a better job. So, one of the things we like about Southwest, they're tenured people that are here for a long time, so they'll be over and over in Landale. They'll, they'll get to know our residents, they'll get to know the homeless that we have, and they'll build a rapport with them. But that cost, our, our cost is, is only going to be the fifty thousand. They carry their own insurance and bonding.
And Mr. Mayor, the risk management will look it over, and they've looked at the contract with the city attorney's office, and the requirements, they'll still be required to hold insurance and licensing and bonding. It's in the agreement.
So, that means that it won't have an effect on our liability?
Public sector liability.
Correct. I, I know that Ms. Felton checked with the California JPIA, and the insurance limits as set were two million per occurrence and five million aggregate, rather than the lower limits, which are often in place on smaller contracts. So, it's a, a higher limit, given the type of work being done, and then, as, as said, they're also a bonded company, so it's, I, between Ms. Felton and myself, we believe that the contract sufficiently protected the city. If issues arise during the performance of this contract, obviously, any future contract we would be able to change, but at this point, we feel that the contract in place adequately protects the city.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I have one more, just to throw it out there. If, we could also look at, now that we're booking events again for the community center, I know the sheriffs are kind of expensive for, if you, for the booked events, or, and I think we've discussed in the past, possibly looking at if there's cheaper options for the residents, because it does get kind of pricey.
Yeah, we definitely would look at that, and, you know, of course, this is up to the council, and you're prerogative, but I could see this expanding a little more, because we're only getting them a couple of days a week. So, we'll look at and monitor, see how it goes, and maybe we can, council can look at, you know, mid-year, next year as well, if mon, monies and revenues permitted, adding that, as well as with our special events as well.
That's good. Any other, any other discussion?
Well, I was going to say to that, Councilman, or Mayor Pretend, we can, we can have them begin as soon as the council's ready. My understanding is the money's already been approved, so we would just have to set up a contract and get, and get things underway. I mean, they could sign papers as early as tonight, but, yeah, as, as soon as, we, we ultimately, of course, have to figure out the hours, so, but if Fourth of July is the goal, we could, we can make that happen.
Okay, all right. Are there any other discussions on this item? Thank you, gentlemen.
If there's no more discussion, I motion to approve the contract.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion's been made to approve the contract by Quavis and seconded by Kearney. Any discussions on the motion? All right, please vote.
For item number eighteen, motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item nineteen, appropriate funding for a heavy-duty dump truck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Last item from Public Works tonight. As council is aware, Public Works Department has one dump truck. This one is a two thousand seven Chevrolet model, and basically has reached its useful life. You know, there's a lot of maintenance and repairs going on. So, anyways, it, it, this is also CNG truck, and the, the tank expires end of this year. So, through the mid-year budget approval by the city council, there was three hundred and five thousand dollars approved for all the vehicles. You know, all the vehicles have been purchased. The, the dump truck search continued, it was difficult to find the right one, you know, there wasn't available, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, anyway, long story short, we finally found two options, you know, either order a brand-new two thousand twenty-three, or a twenty twenty-two, which is unused, it's, it's also brand-new, it's not used, that is available on the lot. Both of these options, they were quite a bit higher than, you know, the roughly seventy thousand that we had anticipated during the mid-year budget, and they're in the upper ninety thousand, nine, ninety-eight thousand five hundred. The twenty twenty-three has an eighteen-month waiting, so this doesn't make sense, you know, because of the CNG tank expiring in December. So, we're left with only one option, which is the unused new twenty twenty-two, which requires thirty thousand additional budget. So, I'd like to recommend the city council approval of additional thirty thousand dollars from ARPA money to, to make this, this possible. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
And you said this is your last request of the night?
That's my last request.
All right, because you had a few on here.
And it's Public Works, we...
Yes, oh, yeah. Yeah, so you got me right there, yes. Absolutely.
Mayor and Council, I wanted to just add, this, this is such a moving target on this truck. I mean, it's frustrating, because we, we budgeted for it, and then every time they found a truck, it was more, it was less, we couldn't get these vehicles, and then now we're telling, the guys won't even get their vehicle till next year. So, we came up with this alternative, and it's the best, but it's still pricey, as I mentioned. That's why I don't want to get rid of any vehicles. I don't even know if I want to sell the old dump truck, because I'm worried about if we, if something happens, and everything is just so expensive and hard to locate now, and the vehicles.
Okay.
And more so, Mr. Mayor, this is probably my last time before the city council, you know, as your inner and public work story.
It's a good thing you didn't lead with that.
But we have your phone number, and we know your wife.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, we thank you for your service to the, to the city. Okay, so what is the pleasure of this item? Is there any more questions before taking motion?
I'll, I'll motion.
I'll second.
Okay, your motion what?
To approve the additional thirty thousand.
There you go. So, the motion's been made by Quavis to...
Not to exceed thirty thousand.
MTE, right, not to exceed.
So, the motion's been made by Quavis to appropriate the thirty thousand, and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. So, any discussion?
We could buy shovels. Just a truck and all of this. All right, I could just shout out there shoveling dirt.
All right, will the council please vote? That's why you wanted to keep the dump truck.
For item number nineteen, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Okay, let's hear from the city manager. City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be brief. I just, we had the Health and Pet Fair last weekend. It went pretty well. I want to thank all the staff and the council, and all the residents and community for coming out. I, you know, especially, you know, all the staff that participated, you know, Public Works, I forgot, one department, so I want to say MSD, thank you very much. Public Works, LESD, Finance, CSD, thank you all for participating, putting these events on. They were back-to-back events. We had memorial service, and then we had the Health and Pet Fair, so thank you, and thank you to the council and community. That's it.
All right, thank you for the report. Councilwoman Hoffman-Gorman.
All right, so, since the last council meeting, I attended Contract Cities event, which was a four-day, very informative event. Enjoyed it quite a bit. I sat through every single one of the classes, so it was a busy, busy three days' worth of learning and getting to know some of the other cities as well, and trying to learn more about Metro and the goings-on in their city about Metro. So, it was not just education, but it was also going and, and, and learning from my comrades. I also attended the Memorial Day celebration at City Hall, which was absolutely wonderful. Kudos, Mike, to all the work. I heard good things about the coffee cups that were given away as a commemorative souvenir. Just a beautiful event, as always, and... um, just a beautiful event as always, and always an enjoyable time to, to do that. And also, this last Saturday, I attended the Health and Safety Fair here at Jane Addams, and again, great job, Mike, to your team, to my guest, this is team, everything about that was a great event, just walking around, um, and seeing all the Longdale residents. I wanted to see that line for dog license even longer, if the truth be told, and, and shots, because, um, I just, I want everybody to be utilizing that service. But, um, well-attended, the music was great, um, we even had sightings of people out on roller skates from the city, nobody has came back on crutches, so that was a good thing, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman Peckerny.
Thank you. I also attended the Contract Cities Annual Seminar. I went to several, I didn't go to all of my, all the seminars. I also attended Pancakes with Mayor Robert Paul and Miles. The Fire Department put that on, I believe it was Fire, West Basin, and what's it, what's it called, Nations, what's it called?
United Nations.
United Nations. It was well-attended. I attended the Memorial Day Celebration and Remembrance, I put the Remembrance into myself. It was well-attended, uh, the young lady spoke, highly educated, very nice young lady, and they also attended the Health, Safety, and Pet Fair at Jane Addams, and all our departments did a fantastic job. I was glad to see you all out there. I saw the city manager trying to skate, I saw Councilwoman Suarez went onto the rail doing FaceTiming, but, but that off-bass it on.
It was a live stream, actually. But I, I did eventually get off of the wall. So I did attend that one, and it was, it was a great event, I had a lot of fun, actually. Um, I saw Sean in there, and I didn't, I wanted, didn't want to make him look bad, so I jumped him with our wobbly legs. But that was a lot of fun, um, Memorial Day as well was, it was beautiful, it, uh, we had a few people actually get really emotional this time around, and it was heartfelt, and I want to thank staff, and thanks to, um, you know, those that, uh, gave ultimate sacrifice and their family members. Um, and then I did attend, um, let me see, that, that, uh, South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors Meeting, um, nothing notable at this point, um, they are gonna have their election of officers at the next meeting, so we'll have a new incoming chair, um, Cedric Hicks from City of Carson. So he'll be the new, uh, chair. Um, and then, I did attend only one morning of Contract Cities, I had a scheduling conflict pop up, but, um, it's always good to communicate with, um, you know, your fellow electeds and, um, you know, got to see a lot of the vendors and contract people that we worked with, that was great. Um, and then, oh, also, last but not least, your Pancake Breakfast, which was great, had a lot of, uh, the youth show up and, and did get some questions, uh, one of which a resident approached, um, really, really, um, they wanted to know about what's going on with the school traffic. Um, so, I, I know that's in the works, I would like it to come before council, um, so that we can make, you know, a determination on how, what the budget subcommittee recommends, and then how we can move forward, because he was really frustrated about it and really wanted to see changes. Um, so I did want to mention that one, um, if we could get, uh, an update, or eventually when it comes to council, we'll discuss it. And then, I did want to ask, um, because I know we're still working on the Parks, um, Subcommittee with the school district, that's ongoing, um, T B D on the next date, um, but I did, has the billboard committee, um, convened yet?
No, so we're, uh, Diane sent out an email to, um, the person that was asking about it, they sent me a text over the weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, we are working on scheduling that. Diane got a little behind in staff with all the meetings, but they are, they let, uh, the applicant know that we were gonna set up that subcommittee meeting.
I was just curious about the statuses on those, because one got brought up, and then I know it's important to update that, you know, we are working on them, but sometimes the coordination, um, stalls things a little bit, but that's all I have. Pass it on.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, Protam, Quavis.
Um, first of all, Ahmad, thank you for your service and dedication to our city. Hopefully, you'll come back and visit and give us, uh, another request for thirty thousand dollar increase on the truck, uh, but thank you. I also want to thank the Lucentia High School baseball players and coaches for being the Ocean League Champions. They won the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, um, championship, so congratulations, Lucentia High School baseball team. I attended the House of Yahweh Gala, um, fundraiser. I also attended the opening of the Urgen, Ocean Urgent Care Grant, uh, ribbon cutting, which none of my colleagues, they, they all forgot about it, but they were all there.
I didn't, I didn't forget about it.
Oh, well, he didn't forget it, he's still writing it down. Uh, so we do have a new, um, or, uh, urgent care on Hawthorne Boulevard between Manhattan and Marine.
One fifty-sixth.
On one fifty-sixth, they're open until eleven P M. So, it's the old urgent care that closed down a couple of years back. We got to tour the facilities, they are amazing, um, two doctors, two young doctors, uh, that opened this business, and, um, I recommend them to our citizens, they're one of the urgent cares that is open the latest, and that's until eleven P M. So they were great, facilities were great, their food was great, nice tacos, they had tacos, so we had fun. I also attended the Pancake Breakfast with, uh, Mayor Paul and Miles and at Fire Station Twenty-One, a lot of our citizens came in. I especially liked the interaction of our children with the fire truck and the firefighter. He was, uh, demonstrating how he used the oxygen tank and what he carried on his back, and they were all paying attention, which was great. Um, we need a few more events like this to bring the community out, especially our kids, to learn about our public safety and, um, the, the fire department, how great they are in our community. With that, that's, I unfortunately had to work, so I couldn't attend the other events, but I heard they were great, the memorial and the pet fair were great, and, um, a lot of people got licensed, they're, they're little doggies, so hopefully next year we have a bigger line.
Thank you. So I attended, um, the grand opening of Ocean Urgent Care.
Yeah. Yeah, I wonder why.
And the good thing about this urgent care is, one of the good things about it that was well noted is that they take Medi-Cal. It's hard to find an urgent care, care in, uh, your community that takes a Medi-Cal, so that's, um, a real plus, um, for the community. So I want to congratulate them for bringing their business, I mean, their practice, um, to the city of Longdale. Also, the Memorial Day event was a, a great event, um, um, well-organized, put on, I want to thank, um, Mike and his team, and his volunteers there at the community service, this department, the weather was nice, I mean, it was gloomy, but we take gloomy, because usually it's pretty hot. Right, right. Sitting, sitting, oh, cheers, it was a, it was a nice, nice weather, we didn't have to rush through it, right? And so, um, that was a, a great event, I want to thank everyone who came out, um, to remember those who gave their, their lives so that we can continue to have the freedoms and the liberties that we enjoy in this, um, great nation of ours. I also attended Contract Cities and, uh, myself as well. It was a good conference, um, um, this year, a lot of good, um, speakers. Like Pat, I didn't go to every, everyone, and, and the councilwoman is correct, she was in her seat, diligently in her seat, right, first, it wasn't the first, first row, but the first in, last out, and she was really, you know, taking, taking notes and, um, doing, doing, doing her thing, but it was a great conference, um, some great, um, speakers, the networking was pretty well, uh, um, a, as well. You can learn a lot by networking and building relationships, right? And that's, and that's, that's part of it, um, so when things or issues come up, what have you, you can call different cities, you know, um, to get an idea of how they're handling, um, certain issues or what have you, so, um, definitely took the opportunity to do, um, networking, um, at that event, and it wasn't as hot as I thought it was gonna be, which was good. I mean, it was hot, because it was Indian Wells, but it wasn't a hundred and twenty degrees hot, right? So that was, that was nice. Like was mentioned earlier, I had the opportunity to partner with, um, local ten, firefighters' local, um, ten fourteen, which is the firefighters', um, um, union, and we did a Pancake Breakfast for the community at Fire Station, um, Twenty-One, partnering with, um, United Nations, which is a nonprofit organization that, that, um, provide, um, housing opportunities for those in transitions. For whatever reason, they're in transition, and they provide those type of housing opportunities as well as some wraparound services of what have you, um, throughout, um, L A County. And so we was, um, glad to partner with the, um, a lot of, um, children showed up, their parents showed up too, because they were too young to drive, because these are, these are little kids, right? Um, elementary, um, kids, so I want to thank the parents for bringing their, their children. The Fire Department really was, had a lot, that was hospitable, just put it that way. And they really worked well, um, uh, with the, the children and, um, made them feel at home, and the children was engaged in being in the Fire Department, so we look forward to doing that event again. Also, I attended the, briefly attended the Health and, um, Safety, um, Pet Fair. I did note, noticed the, the roller rink, but I was in no condition to be, you know, to get on the roller rink, because I didn't want to risk it. You know, normally I would, you know, but I was half-dressed, meaning I had on a half-suit, because I had another engage.
I thought you meant you were half-dressed.
Right. Half-dressed for the occasion, right? So I had a half-a-suit on, because I was heading to a more event where you couldn't wear shorts, roller rinking, you know, type of, um, outfit, um, but that was a great event, I want to thank, once again, the, uh, the volunteers, as well as the, the staff, uh, for putting that event on, it was well-run, and, um, yes, hopefully we'll have more folks, um, next year, um, in line. But those who, who did took advantage of getting their, um, their dogs, um, licensed and the shots or whatever they, they needed, um, to keep their, um, furry house member, family member, um, safe, so that was a great event. And that's all I have. Yeah. And with that, we will close public, I mean, items from the city manager, items from the council members, and we do have a closed session, actually, we have two. We have a public employees' performance evaluation as well as conference with a legal counsel. I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give us the provision of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the consent of the council, we're actually gonna flip the order that we do them tonight, so first would be the litigation under Government Code five four nine five six point nine D four, and then after that, the performance evaluation under five four nine five seven B. Thank you.
Okay. That'd be the order. Okay, we have returned from closed session, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to give the report of the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council was briefed on both items in closed session, uh, discussion was held, direction was given, but no action that was reportable under the Brown Act was taken this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The regularly scheduled meeting to be held on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and July third, twenty twenty-three, will be counseled by the Order of the City Council on May fifteenth. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty P M. on Monday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, Longdale Council Chambers is now nine thirty-three, nine thirty-four. We are adjourned.